Any additions or modifications to the agenda?
Yes.
And I updated the agenda earlier this afternoon. Added three items that weren't in the original. However, you have that revised agenda in front of you, single page. So A, B, and C are the additional items that I'll discuss later in the meeting. My city will be providing the information and discussion items. However, the modified contract is not with City Assembly. That happens to be us. So how about, we'll try Silverton.
Okay, can we just go on and get started on those then?
I'd rather, well, I can do that now. It's up to you, whatever you... There are information items and there are things that have come up basically since I prepared this, which was over the Labor Day meeting, and we got it on Tuesday. Has everybody been delivered to your house, by the way? You should have.
Yeah.
I've had probably six, I'd say six or seven people from the community come in and talk to me about crosswalks and kids down at schools and stuff. And because Lisa's not been here, I haven't gone out and looked myself, I'm sure you're all familiar with the problem if there isn't back the problem. Both a considerable background and education, I've always seen problems. And sometimes it's just the first week into the school, and sometimes it's a fundamental flaw that should be addressed. When it comes to safety of kids, everything should be looked at, and that's what I intend to do. But I've not been able to do that. I will be doing it in the next few days. I've got a couple of people with specific examples. But because I'm still learning the names of some of the streets, even as much as I like them, I don't pay much attention to the names of the streets. So I'm going to go out and look at those. But I want to let you know that I had concerned people talking about kids and, of course, Center Street, but a couple of the streets that may have some issues to be wanted to address, perhaps not done, but I'll look at that. Three of us just returned at 4:30 from a meeting on the eclipse. I think we'll talk more about that in information. And two councilors were there, but we want to comment quite a bit. It's something that takes place at 343 days, and there could be a whole lot of people in the area about 10:30 on August, whatever that date is.
Wherever.
Monteville has already taken considerable action to accommodate and even encourage people to participate in that event. This is in the United States only, complete solar eclipse, full solar eclipse. Because we suspect that there will be fog and overcast on the coast in the summer, as there normally is, people from the coast quite likely, quite possibly, could decide upon the last minute to come inland so they can see it because the Salem, the Salem Stadium proximity area is going to be getting more of a total eclipse than anybody else in two minutes. And the anticipation is that if you haven't prepared for it, and Monteville has already done that, although there's a great deal of work to do, if you haven't prepared for it, then you may suffer the impact. If you have prepared for it, it's possible to both enhance the reputation of the city to make some money, but it will probably be pretty challenging. And so I think when we come up to information items, since Gina's on with everybody, I want to comment on her, but I've got about three or four pages of notes. And certainly we want to do something, whether it's a defensive gesture or an offensive one, we will probably want to do something because of the feeling there's going to be hundreds of thousands of people in this area. And so it's not like we can just hope that it'll go away because we've got the ideal circumstances. Even the cloud cover is anticipated historically at least to be less here than most other places. And so again, we can comment on that. As you probably realize, the contract with Silverton expired on June 30th. I've been working with them to expand that, but to also include this time Kathy Eaton, who had been working here on her vacation on the menu. I cut it back from her today, but I haven't had a chance to look at it. She reviewed it, that's their city manager. Their assistance is absolutely vital. They'll be here tomorrow, most of the day, both on payroll and then in anticipation of ability to help me with the audit, which is, you'll see lower down in the agenda, which announced that over November 28th. About the way that the year is, it can be, because it has to be reported to the state and given to the state by December 31st. So we have to modify the contract with Silverton to accommodate. Sarah continues to help with payroll, and Kathy, who now is not coming anymore on her vacation, who is going to come here, we have to pay for her too. So I'll be working on that modified contract for probably two or four months of this, this year, hoping that the body, the people that are here, that they will be involved, this year, but I need their assistance to just say no, turn it into that. So those are the three additional items.
Okay, thank you, David. Were there any comments in the public? Now we'll go on to the staff reports. Deputy Tom, you're next.
Well, Mayor, Council, thank you. My first thing I want to address is with your time of Sergeant Sherburne, and I don't know if, how many of you have met my new supervisor, First Line Supervisor Sergeant Don Prese, if he's here with us today. And he has taken over Sergeant Sherburne's position. If there's any concerns that are above mine, right in pain, he's the one you, you direct to bounce things off of. So he has plenty of business cards in his pocket, I know that. And, but I've known Sergeant Prese for a while now, and he is a perfect fit for the contract Sergeant position, so I'm glad he's with us. As far as very important, we've got for the month of August, 38 calls for service, no arrests. There's a couple of, one is specific that's on there that if anybody has any questions about sex offense, we can certainly address that privately. The Harvest Fest went very smoothly, except for a couple little alcohol-related incidents. The parade went very smoothly. In fact, I believe that it was probably about 50,000 of food trees this year. And we threw out about 15 to 18 pounds of candy, just us alone. The sheriff's office, we had the tent Nick Hunter was in a car, and Deputy Casey Burnham was also in a car, along with myself, and it's moving cars. There's a big turnout and very smooth. I believe, well, and then also I've had David has done a ride along with me, and we've exposed some things that he's going to address, obviously, sharing in your future. And he's already mentioned, one of those things is the crosswalks and stuff like that in different instances. But working directly with David on that.
So Tom, are you seeing crosswalk by, I guess, violations or something more than they have in the years past?
No, we're not. The crosswalks that are established, especially for the school on Center Street, which is staffed during the peak flow of children across the street, is staffed by a crossing guard, which is, it's huge for those kids to get across because, you know, you see it when there isn't one. But there are other streets from that point back toward the school or street in specific that may need to be addressed, that does not have a crosswalk.
Is that something the school can provide? Because I think that's a paid person from the school that does that.
Oh, as far as the crossing guard, yes, that's a paid person that does that. I don't, I'm not, I'm not positive on if that's something they just do, or if that's, you know, where that is within the school district. But the street that is in, one of the streets that's in concern, it just doesn't have a crosswalk in it, whether if it's staffed with a crossing guard or not, it just is not marked. Which is also kind of what we're finding too throughout the cities and on stop signs and things like that. Well, my ORS, can I enforce them? Because there isn't a stop line, but there's a stop sign, there's some issues there. So we're going to address those.
They look at it in Church Street with the new subdivision, because I know a lot of kids will pull in the crossing there.
Sure.
We should probably start looking.
Yeah, and I have talked with David about that. I do have that radar trailer that does collect all kinds of data. I am, in the future, what I'm going to do, and I addressed that this morning in an interview, that I am going to collect as much data as I can of pre-pastoral development on Church Street, and the high flow, low flow, high speed, low speed, all that, all that stuff, that trailer accumulates. And then that's pre-construction, and then during construction and in post-construction. Obviously, there'll be a variance of, you know, phases, but I would like to be able to take that, present that data to you guys and to Public Works, County, Marin County Public Works and Traffic Engineering, to see and to show them, here's what we have before, here's what we have now. That's one thing that we didn't have necessarily when we went and changed the speed limit on Northwest Star Street, was the before and after. So hopefully I would be able to provide that and have a good foundation of saying, this is where we're at.
Is it still going to hold true? Because I know we've gone and asked Marin County Public Works for, to actually make a designated crosswalk, the stripes out there in several different places, and they've come out, did their studies, and said, well, we have the ones that are really heated. And then they put the caveat that, well, you've got to treat every intersection, you know, whether there's a crosswalk there or not, you just, you know, have to.
That is a true statement. But when you want to err on the side of safety and the safety of children, I think certain people will listen to that. So, and also, some of those streets that we're talking about are city-linked paying streets. So that has an effect.
Primarily it's been the county ones, because I know right down here on Northwest Star at the post office, at least, you know, we said, well, kids come up, they don't go all the way, they come around.
And they usually shut that LED when it's, when it's, yes.
So is this a, you know, sometimes it's a slow-moving train if these crosswalks established or something done, like, with kids crossing streets and, is this something that needs to be prior?
I think...
Have a higher priority, I guess?
I think it should be a higher priority, obviously. I wouldn't want to sit here and be talking about this after something happens. So, but it should be a higher priority.
They also know we've asked for the solar-powered crosswalk flashing lights and everything, and been shot.
Well, that was a quick shoot, yeah, yeah, that was probably real quick, just price alone.
Right.
But I do know there's grants out there and stuff to that, which we could afford to. But that does involve more, for lack of better color, on the street, more, more publicity, more, you know, that type of stuff, but then when you talk about solar powered power But we will look in that and should be, talk about everything, so, yes. And David is aware of that too.
Okay, is that it?
That is it for me.
Okay, thank you.
Is this your last meeting? I haven't heard.
What's that?
Is this your last meeting? Do I have to say bye?
Well, I think, I think...
After wait suspense for the end, it's like...
I think that your city manager will probably make that announcement at some point.
I don't know myself.
Because if he gets out and leaves, you know, I want to say, well, thanks for...
Thanks, you get out.
Let me put it this way, we tried everything we could to get him out of here. However, we failed in that respect. He showed up in a shirt and tie, he was still packing, but he looked very nice. Several of us did some double takes, but in the end, and his competition was actually pretty intense, a young man who's got an awful lot of potential. But he will be with us another three years. We tried to get him out, discouraged, he wasn't having any of it, and so he'll be with us another three years.
Well, I had some video from the parade, may I change? All this whole lot happened.
Playing a, an intersection?
Yeah.
I can come out for Christmas party if you want.
I'm glad to.
But we interviewed for two hours, and he's a nice young man, very sharp, and obviously he will go places. But he did a good job, and we had a few questions, and kind of got into it a little bit, and trying to discover what we wanted to. We had tremendous, tremendous community support, including basically a short letter, two or three paragraphs, with probably 25 or 36 signatures. And I must have had a dozen people to talk to me personally, why I said, I can't say they were threatening, like you ever get, but it could be interpreted that if you were pessimistic. But no, we've got a common community person.
And I concur with you when you saw those other people, because I can actually say everybody that I have met in the sheriff's department, from patrol officers up to administrative staff, are very...
Very sharp.
Sharp, and, I mean, they don't bully you off, I mean, they work with you, and really concerned about what's going on out there, so.
I hope in three years that Tom decides to move on or something, and so the young man applies, because I'd like to see him fitting into this community personally.
Does he ride a horse? He, uh, he could be trained.
Okay. That's true. If there's anything else, we'll be excused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck on your, you know, white panties, something like that.
I just want to comment on Tom for bringing the radar wagon just across the street from our house.
Sure.
The traffic was real slow. You took it away, now zoom!
Oh, well, I had to place it over here on Northwest Star Street for all that Harvest Fest ingress, ingress traffic.
What does one of those machines cost?
Uh, base price about $7,000.
$7,000?
Yeah.
Does any of the communities that you serve, do they have, does the city have any of these machines in their own personal property?
They don't. Well, the county has two of these radar trailers that has to be shared throughout the entire county, including all the other contract cities.
Sure, sure slows down the traffic.
Yeah.
The only thing that's lacking, you need a camera on that sucker for the people that speed through it.
That do speed through, yeah, that would be nice, yeah, that's true.
Or at least a flash, that made them think there was a camera.
Yeah.
Hey, yeah.
There you go.
Thanks anyway.
Well, good, thank you.
If I may just do a proper hello. Thanks, David. Thanks, Tom, thank you so much. Thank you, guys.
Steve, I see you misspelled your name.
Yeah, that's okay. No, it's okay.
Okay, you're excellent. Yeah, I don't have anything for tonight, so.
Okay, thanks. David, did you give your spiel already, or do you have any?
I have other things on the city manager report, which should be quite a good, but early, and go through early.
So we'll skip to that. Or do you want to do it now?
Which section do you prefer?
We're also on there, are you, just on the information...
Special item?
Yes. Kind of get the rest of this stuff out of the first. Okay, we'll go to resolutions and ordinances, are there any? Anything from that?
There are none.
There are none. We have to approve the minutes of the meeting of August 8th, 2016. We've received these, are there any additions or corrections?
I would say, I have a motion that we accept the minutes of the August 8th, 2016 minute meeting at present.
Second. And move the second that we accept the minutes as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Give me, my motion or consensus, we designate the city administrator as the city's budget officer. What's required?
Just that, in other words, I just have to submit to the State Department of Revenue, probably some others, that I'm in fact the budget officer before it starts. If that's what the council wants, I didn't see any such official designation anywhere before, and so that, so that I can prepare, assuming that's what you want. All we need to do is to have you vote yes, and then I can submit those minutes and we're done.
Okay, we have a motion to that effect. I'll make a motion that we appoint David Marshall, the city administrator, as the budget officer for the city's committee. And move the second for reference, David Marshall as the city budget officer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries? If you would want your information with the special items. Okay, for the year 16...
This is for year 16, year end financial results.
Okay, this is your, this is your...
Yes, a lot of this is me, and I'm going to kind of skip around a little bit. Did Randy Lee figure that I wish he had?
I think he'll be back.
I'm going to skip over the wind machines for a minute, because it came up with the planning commission, apparently there's a little uncertainty. I know what the issue is, but in case you have questions, I'd skip over that. I'm going to go on to a couple of ordinances that Tom had mentioned, ordinance Street 38 versus street parking. We've had some issues with people who are circumventing the law, and we saw a couple of those personally. The ordinance is quite lengthy, and originally I understood it had cold, no teeth in it. Well, it does, it's $15, $100 fine later on in there. It also appeared initially, because this is probably a 15 or 20-page, 12, 15-page ordinance, it also appeared that if somebody simply moved it after 72 hours across the street, that the ordinance didn't apply. That doesn't appear to be the case. However, any ordinance, this number 300 or something, is over 20 years old. And so what I'm doing is just going through and updating it, so, updating them so that I can bring it to you for recommendations for adjustment and modification. In this case, I think it's just, we haven't looked at it carefully enough, and Monteville had a pretty good example of what to do about somebody who moves something that's objectionable around the block. Still, around the block is considered in their ordinance and in ours, as it turns out, that they haven't moved it at all. So I think the ordinance requires less modification than I originally thought, but we're spending a fair amount of time on parking issues and trailers and trash trailers in various places that are certainly staying there longer than 72 hours, and I saw a couple of them personally. So what I would like to do is at the meeting in October, is bring that ordinance back to you with recommended changes, and I will certainly run it by you first. I think the number of changes will be minimal, but I think there's ways to make it a little more efficient. That same philosophy applies to the ordinance on, not really weeds, on nuisances, and many, many nuisances. And I misunderstood what that ordinance was about, but probably it needs to be updated. We apparently have quite a few issues with cold, obnoxious vegetation, and I don't fully understand them yet. And probably if they exist, we need to modify that so we have a little more teeth on that one, but I'm not absolutely sure on that. The one that gives most bothersome to me is ordinance number 320, and that makes it a 20, 25-year-old ordinance. It does not at all conform to the form that we give people to fill out. It doesn't conform to cost, it doesn't conform to liquor, and there's one other issue, a lesser issue. And that ordinance is probably the first one that I will edit and bring back for your approval, because at least in my experience, the ordinance takes precedence over anything else, and anything that would be due to somebody might from past practice, and Steve would have to help me out with this, might from past practice be enforceable, but it says $40, and the ordinance says $5. And so I think we need to get them to conform, and I suspect we have some ordinances that are similar, but we're just going to bring them up one at a time, when an issue takes place with one of those. So probably you'll see that at the October meeting, so that the form and the ordinance basically say the same thing.
So we can see what other cities doing this?
I always look at other cities, what they're doing.
Do we, David, do we put out anything in our mailer that just to remind people about the parking? Have we done that?
We, I don't know that it's on the mailer, I don't even know that it's on our webpage. I just began to worry about this about 10 to 12 days ago, and at least not being here for the last week, it's been kind of hard to do much of anything, other than to realize that there are some things, and some of them might be minor tweaking, but some of them might be wrong parts and liquor, and really has to be adjusted. Fortunately, it's fairly short.
Just make a reminder about the street parking and weeds as we move forward, updating that so people aren't caught off guard.
No, we will do that, that's always going to be the intent.
On your, on that weed ordinance, one of the things that was a reoccurring problem is, you know, it was meant for tall weeds, grass, bacon lots, and everything like that. Where I think there's an issue is that we were sending notices every time, and there were some people that they wouldn't do anything until they received a notice, which takes quite a bit of time to document and send it out. So if there's some way that you get your notice and...
Well, I mean, to me, it's almost like progressive, what would you want to call it in personnel matters, progressive discipline. I think that in things in which somebody can be fined, that we pretty much adopt the same philosophy as it does if somebody had to be disciplined. You do it verbally the first, document that you did verbally, that you do it in writing the second time, the third time. If, for example, somebody who worked for me and I talked to him verbally, and I talked to him, and I wrote it down, and the third time, you sort of, I can even fire him. I think the third time, if somebody who's just simply ignoring us, and we believe us in ordinance that ought to be enforced, and of course, ordinances are supposed to be enforced, otherwise why have they? Then the fine should be applied at that time. I don't think we should be sending out six notices, seven notices, what's the point? It's easy enough now to ignore Allen or somebody when they come out and says, yeah, I'll take care of it, and move it around the block, and nothing happens. So it's interesting about ordinances, and this young man here gave me a book that explained the first ordinance that we ever passed, and I was going to read it to you, but I held it a week or two later, because it's very interesting, and really presents the philosophy about having ordinances in the first place. Now that Randy's back here, I'd like to talk a little bit about the wind machines. It came out of the last planning commission. Apparently, there's some uncertainty as to what, if anything, the planning commission should be doing. It's not in the development code, I believe that's correct. So there's, there's nothing in the development code that talks about wind machines in the first place. However, it has come up as an issue, and there are numerous reasons, dozens probably, why we shouldn't have any wind machines, but I have the impression that it hasn't been either finally buried, or if not agreed to, that it's a subject that we should bring up and discuss further. And so, and I kind of summarize that, okay, and just to see if there's anything the council wants to pursue on wind machines, or the fact that it's not in development code, use it, let it go away.
Well, I, go ahead, Daniel.
I, I would like to see them as an outright not allowed. The, the intent is, they probably have to be at least 20 feet higher, if not more so than the structure. There has to be a false zone, that would be using that as the radius. So if you have a 37, 38-foot peak, tonight you're close to 60 feet in height, you need 120-foot radius. They do have collapsible poles, but that would be an engineer's pole, I'm fine. They would need to be something that the public would not be allowed in there, should that ever fall. They would create noise along with visual issues. And I just think it's something we want to make as a... And I just think it's something we want to make as a, identify as we should not allow in our city. And I'm not sure what an insurance company would say about a private party having one of them back there.
Has, has somebody actually applied for one?
Not that I know of. We had, we had a request of county.
Oh, what?
We had a request from Homer here in town. Could they throw it on?
Okay.
That's what prompted the discussion.
Well, we're doing, doing ordinance?
Well, we're, we're doing our development code, and we could address that as, it's kind of a unique situation. These are not allowed in the city ordinance. See, and I thought there was something, 'cause I was in the planning commission, it's been two or three years, three years ago maybe, and I called it, there's a company in the independence that makes them, and they told me that what the county doesn't allow them in our area, and I don't know if the city supersedes that, but I thought there was something in there, because when it came up, there was a height restriction in one of our ordinance, and so I remember the council, I mean, the planning commission saying, we've kind of got it written in there because we have height restrictions on structures, and then it is a structure, no matter how you... So I don't know where that ever went or why that got lost, but maybe we need to be clear on spelling it out.
I would almost refer to the state of Oregon, if it's alternative energy type system, and it's like solar panels. It's an outright use, you cannot deny those. Now, whether or not that applies to wind generators, you know, type.
It, it does not, and that's when this all came up recently, is when the state told us we had to address our development code and allow solar as an outright use. And so we, we entered that into our development code, but we stayed silent, not going in. Part of it, you're exactly right, is because the height of a building is limited, and this is not necessarily attached to a building. It's standalone in theory because of that.
So when you have to put this in our development code, does council have to pass on it? Or who passes?
Well, we would make the suggestion, as the planning commission and then the city council would vote on it and bring it in. I just, we're kinda looking for direction. There's a lot we can do. We can condition the car out of it so that we protect us and the neighbors, or we can just say, you know, not, not in this city.
So who draws this up?
The cog and the planning commission and Dave would work together on something in the development.
So could you, and then we can consider it and vote on it?
Yeah, I just want your direction, well, and consensus.
Well, we certainly wanna have something, okay? If there are any questions asked, for people who wanna do it, why, we should know what we're gonna tell them.
Right, 'cause at this point, the code is silent, which means it's not allowed, and people can sell out. And I think we have a lot of cities around this, 'cause I checked, is there any cities around us that allow that? And I couldn't find any. Like the state and Onsvill, Turner, Mount Angel, I mean, there's some, they have something that's preventing that.
Yeah, and I don't know what that is, but I, I would, the first thing I would definitely do is just check with the state of Oregon with their alternative energy, because that is something they have pushed, and if they do not address it or will not give, you know, recommendation that it is something that they would, then I think it gives us better direction.
Or then check the county too, 'cause I know that when I called the county, we want to buy one, they said they'd go and sell it 'cause we couldn't put it up in our area. I don't know. That's what my, that's what they're interested in.
And I see them up all over the place in the county.
Well, I mean, in incorporated areas within the county, they said, when I asked, would you sell them, they said, no, not for your area. So I don't know what, that the guy was making that up, or he, but he...
Okay, well, let's get the information, get it compiled, and then we'll be able to consider it in more detail, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
David? Yeah, a couple, couple other items. I, I don't know, the two counselors who attended the meeting today would like to talk more about what they heard at the closing meeting. That's an item that is quickly lengthened, and I think there's going to have to be some type of city philosophy or approach to next August.
Yeah, you need it? You got, go ahead, Bob.
Well, we're gonna have to make some plans, and so, well, what we're gonna do is we're gonna have a whole lot of people in here that... And when you get to people like that, they, they don't pay attention to signs and laws or anything. They go to places like Gene said in the meeting today that, you know, they drive the cars over the grass field, and it's gonna be during harvest time too. We're gonna have footprints going up and down the road. So we gotta figure out what we're gonna do to accommodate all of this, and we're gonna have... I don't, the way they talk today, there's nothing left hardly for, you know, to put people up, you know, like even, even camp, camp spots are gonna, I think they're gonna, one of these hours festival, they go over there for dry camping. And it just, and of course, we're gonna figure out what we're gonna do to the lawn department, because we don't have a whole lot of lawn department right now.
What time of the day is this?
Uh...
Start to fly.
We're bored.
The actual eclipse will come through our area about ten sixteen and last till ten twenty-six. The whole part of this that a lot of people don't realize is, yes, the eclipse occurs on the twenty-first, it's a Monday of August of two thousand seventeen, twenty seventeen. They are figuring people will start to be coming in starting the seventeenth, eighteenth in that time period, and camping and looking in different areas. They're also going to be watching the weather, because if it hits the Oregon coast first, that's where a lot of people would probably be, but if it's gonna be cloudy, they'd be able to be seen there, they're gonna start coming in. And they figure they will travel a hundred miles, 'cause we are in pretty much the center path of the eclipse. I mean, we will have biggest viewing area around. And one involves, right, 'cause one of the things that they didn't address, and there was a representative from dirt for the farms there, was this is during harvest, you know, and it's kinda like, well, we can't stop harvesting, you know, we're gonna be going up and down the roads, but the other part is a lot of this grass seed harvesting will be done, but you still have fields that people are gonna probably drive in and everything like that. So there's potential fire and everything like that. Marion County is looking at it through their emergency services coordination, you know, how they're gonna do it. ODOT is working on a contingency plan, because there could be a hundred thousand people going up and down Highway twenty-two. If, if it's cloudy here, they're gonna go over there, but they have, campground's are already filled out around here. Like, you know, Savannah and everything like that. Silver Creek Falls, they figure that's gonna be full, Detroit's gonna be full. So this influx of people is going to be putting a pretty good impact on all services, city, county. They're trying to figure out hospitals, 'cause you're gonna have people coming through that, you know, medical events or something like that, so...
So should we have a small committee to see what we need to do as a city? Gene, would you be willing to form a small committee of some three or four people?
Okay.
Give us some definite guidelines, right, what the city could do, and what we need to do. Should you listen to it?
But in the same token, we need to make sure people feel welcome too.
I know, but I mean, yeah, that's right, and, and that could be addressed, and that, I have a committee, I don't know about committee, of course, but the thing is, somebody's gonna be responsible for, you know, giving us the information we need in a concrete way, and exploring the possibilities for making people, people welcome.
And also control the same thing.
So would you be willing to chair a small committee, pick out whoever you want?
Well, what I can do is I can take our emergency operation plans that we have and involve the party department. I'll work with a deputy, you know, to go have a connection with Marion County, and I have contacts and so on, so there you go.
Keep us informed.
Okay, David, go ahead. Couple more items. I've already mentioned that the audit is scheduled for November twenty-eighth. That will take a great deal of time to get ready for. I hope to start doing that tomorrow, after the two employees from Suburban are here tomorrow. Very briefly, I'm gonna go now for what's my city manager's report. I'll get to this quickly. We've been doing a lot of research on webpages. Let's see, at least anything, looked at awful lot of webpages, ones that we liked, the ones that we didn't like, and why. I've kinda summed that up, you know, highlights of activities. A, modernizing, updating webpages. A big problem we have with the one we have and use now is simply not user friendly. There's so many things we can't do with it, but when we really started looking at webpages, we said, the ones we really like have almost a stunning front home webpage. I mean, it grabs you right away. The next thing we noticed is that the really good ones have a much larger font. You can find some webpages that font's about the size of ours, very small, which makes following it and pursuing it down into lower levels of a webpage very difficult, and we don't want that. We want to be able to get around with the site easily, and there's some that are very good and some we get lost, you know? And we're doing that because I've taught a couple of web developers and they said, tell us what you want, so that we have some idea. All of this, of course, is for next fiscal year, but I certainly plan to put it in our budget. Right now, our webpage is just, even if it's moderately attractive, it's not functional at all. It takes a great deal of time to put something in, and then if you look at it, for example, on the minutes of this meeting tonight, it would simply be a PDF icon, and that's what you click on, because it's all we can get in there. So we've been spending some time with that. And I'll have more information for you probably when we come with the proposal, probably a recommendation of a developer for a webpage starting next year.
And curiosity, what, what's it cost now?
I don't know yet.
They can be, kind of expensive?
They can be expensive, yes. And the question then becomes, do we want a webpage that is functional and draws people in? Or at least do we want and attractive, or do we want one that is simply provides information? But for example, right now, if you look at some webpages, you can pay your utility bill off the webpage, and we have, that's another issue, but we have people who have to walk in. They don't have credit cards, we don't have debit cards, we don't have any online payment. Last week, for the first time I really watched since, since Lisa wasn't here, I watched people who barely fit enough to get out of their car, having to bring their payments into our desk. And that's just not acceptable. That's not good customer service, and it may be something we'll just put out on the sidewalk, but I finally ended up after about a day and a half of that, well, it didn't take me that long to do it, but there's about a day and a half of it, people whose physical fitness, weight, or age almost kept them from getting up to the front window. How many, maybe eight or ten? I started going out and getting their payments from them. Well, they should be able to pay on a webpage, you know, and so I'll, it's a very philosophical thing, but we're doing a lot of investigation on that, and I'll have a recommendation too for you, probably in February, March, including the price and everything else. As Tom said, I've been touring with him, so I see some of the practical problems out there. That's been very interesting. I indicated the audit, thought it wasn't scheduled yet, but it wasn't when I first booked this up. It is scheduled for now, November twenty-eighth through December second, but I've taken an entire leap, which means nothing else for my purposes, we'll give them that leap. The financial system upgrade is on hold. I've talked to Gene about that a little bit. It's just on hold right now, and there'll be more information on that soon. I'll start working on the fiscal year eighteen, we're about to live January. One of the things I'd like to do, unless you say otherwise, I'm going to offer, maybe even if nobody shows up. In the past, what I normally do is have the budget committee together and make sure they knew what the responsibilities are as a budget committee, and that they understand the difference between appropriation and unappropriation, and then the fund balance and the fund in account, because the budget committee and then ultimately the city council has a legal responsibility for that budget. But it's also for anybody in the community who might not understand how Oregon budget law works. It's pretty simple, really, as long as you keep it in simple language, which I think I can do, and it's a six million dollar budget, but, which isn't terribly large, but it's hugely important to us, and I think then you understand where money is and where it is in, as far as the different funds. And so I'm going to offer, unless you say otherwise, I'm going to offer a kind of a, I'm gonna say, a couple of educational meetings in which we talk about it. Budget committees cannot talk about next year's budget until you have the formal budget meeting. In other words, the presentation of the proposed budget can only be done when it's announced and published as it's required by Oregon statute. But you get the budget committee together to discuss this year's results, so they have a baseline to compare next year's budget to what's actually happening this year, and given the uncertainty and doubt of both our cash accrual basis and our modified accrual basis, and many, many months of essentially no financial reporting, I think it's gonna be very important to do that, because we're gonna have to have a baseline of what this year is like so that we know what next year's budget should look like. And so I'm gonna offer that probably in March, and if they're not sure, that's fine, but I'll maybe offer.
Yeah, David, can I interrupt?
Yeah.
Um, back at the financial system upgrade, I know we had, before you got here, you okayed a new server and all of that business. Could that been, where is that? Has that been upgraded, or?
The, um, no, it's distorted. It's not been upgraded. There, there was a real misunderstanding of what needed to be done and what was actually done. And I'd rather talk about the details not here, but it had nothing to do with anybody here in, in the city. It was just either misunderstanding or technical misunderstanding of what needed to be done, or miscommunications between RIT people and Cessell. At the time, we were down for four days with the understanding of we got back up, we would have Connect, the latest release of Cessell, would work on a server. Well, that should have been, it should have been understood before any of this happened, but it wasn't understood. We can't go down for four days without having hardware or software, especially if we're getting eight hundred utility bills in and ten, twenty, thirty accounts payable. We thought to be able to pay that, and we couldn't do it, so I chose to go back to clarity so that we could get that paid and figure out what we can do next. And I have, I think, and that's an idea, most of it can't leave, but I compare with her, of what we need to do next. But right now, we need to be able to close last year's lot perks. And as far as I'm concerned, we're looking now at July first to have Connect, because we need it. A council sealed the launch, it doesn't work in the present system at all, and so we need Connect. We'll be one of the few that don't, that will not have the current release if we don't do that. We can function, whether we pay over or offer examples, but it gets harder and harder for even Catholic and Sarah from Silverton to take what they know with Connect and basically be able to operate it on our system. So it was kinda disappointing, but basically our server, after all the research and everything, was not capable of supporting Connect. Preferably with that effect. We'll run test that. Right now, there's just too many other priorities. I mean, we're three months into this year, and we're probably were financially there last year. We have to do better, and we're close to a now, just, I'll address that in a brief, in just a moment. I'm gonna skip over the public works. Most of you know what the hassle subdivision status is, I'm assuming. I am getting increasing calls about when, what are gonna be the prices, when is it going to be complete, all this sort of thing, and I haven't really paid much attention, but I'm trying to give you two or three calls or visits. Tell us more about what's going on there. So starting on September, this is September, starting on October first... So starting on September, this is September, starting on October 1st, we will start both webpage and Facebook and newsletter articles on a Realtor's name, a general contractor's name. I haven't followed up on any of those right now, but I think we owe our citizens more than they know right now, and I don't know much more than that, so we're going to start doing that.
I contacted the Realtor. Family member of the line would like to purchase that lot, and they were saying probably not until next year. They would have home sites or plans available for dealing?
And see, I just haven't been able to spend the time on it, but I'd like to. But I'm hearing conflicting information, which means a lot of people don't know, and we're probably one of them, but I've certainly dated people who are serious. And so if there's a lot hard information that we may have, I'd like to start recording that so that people do know something. So that's the intent. Just a couple other non-stable personnel items, although we did have Sampa here, so if we could go, last Friday, she's just got some time with Alan, Jason, and Lisa on health insurance. They learned a great deal, and they were very comfortable with what they did learn. The rumor on the street, however, the Affordable Care Act is going to cause many, many problems with the cost of health insurance next year for the next, and I've been hearing that even since my last school visit, almost a year ago, that the Affordable Care Act, which was going to be a government program that costs tax payer nothing, which is pretty interesting when you think about it, that the IRS penalties and fines and everything associated with not conforming to the Affordable Care Act will make sure that the revenue matched the expenses. Well, we've been associated with the federal government one way or another for a couple of decades, really, that probably not going to happen, since the IRS itself is seriously understaffed. But what I'm hearing from lots of people is that we could have given them these more health insurance very carefully next year, as everybody here, because there may be some real disruption in the cost, but nobody is any more firm on that than that. Just get ready. And so, of course, I told Sampa that I wanted to talk to her in January, because that health insurance is hugely important to our employees. It's something I would give up a pay raise for to have that with health insurance personally, because with many employees, whose health insurance is almost as important to the number of pay. So I'm going to look at that very carefully, and of course, make recommendations to you on the budget. One last thing, I got, I don't want to go over now, but I wondered, I gave you three pages of financial reporting, because the June 30th is all preliminary, because nothing has a June 30th is final until the auditor says. But the last three pages are the three issues and verses that I think are most important. Appropriations reporting for five operating funds. We have maybe 12 or 15 funds, but there are five that are really the operating funds. There's a general fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, the streets fund, and the parks fund. The other are STC funds, or a capital fund, or a couple smaller funds that ought to be closed, and they will be. And so I will focus on those five, because that's where our payroll is charged, that's where most of our materials and services are charged, and I will focus on that. And we can't overrun appropriations in those funds, or any. We have a couple of examples where we have overrun appropriations, that's not permitted by statute, it will show up in the audit. However, that's just the case for those that haven't been formally closed yet, and they won't be formally closed, we feel that our decision has. The next page shows fund balances. My concern, I don't pretend to know the answer yet, is that the fund that perhaps is most critical to us, the water fund, has a very small ending fund balance. It is not, it's not that it's not made in money, it isn't, but that it seems to be dwindling in size for reasons I don't quite understand. You'll notice that the ending fund balance is $30,203 per audit, whereas the sewer fund is $956,000. The water fund is, seems to be challenged, and I'm not sure why. I really need to dig into that. But that's why I kind of concentrated on the operating funds, because they're the ones that people charge to, they're the ones, the enterprise funds, primarily the water and sewer, the ones that are supposed to pay for themselves, and to have sufficient cash for infrastructure repairs and replacements out decades. The water fund can't do that, pal. It just can't, not with $30,000. I mean, I almost have $30,000. And so the water fund, I need to really look at it because I don't understand, and it appears not to be growing, it doesn't appear to be shrinking much in size, but it's a hugely critical fund for us, and it doesn't have much money, which means that we're not setting anything aside for the infrastructure that's in the ground. And the SBC funds, of course, can't cover that, that's where we develop. We have a system, and I'm not familiar enough with it to know, but that's one reason I showed the fund balances. The positive note to this is the last page of Hanchin and Bank, we have our $6 million budget, but we have about $3.5 million in the bank. I've never seen that proportion, that's very healthy. Now, a lot of the SBC funds, and you can see there occasionally SBC funds is just short of $1.7 million, and that's great, but there's $1.7 million in the park or in the operating funds, but again, most of it, almost all of it, not in the water fund. And by February, I'll know a lot more about that, and I'll be able to address that and talk to you about that a little bit more. But it's something that's a little disturbing, mostly because I don't understand it yet. So I don't want to go into any more of the financing, of course, but all of this will then come up again when we start working on it. And that's my report.
Thank you, David. Okay. Are there any questions you have with this? Thanks a lot.
No, not here. Sorry.
$100. I'm worried about like 50 years.
Yeah. We just had a slight year discrepancy, and I was wondering if you've loaded this past year for previous.
Thank you, David. I have no recourse. Bob, do you have anything for us?
$100.
Okay. Gene?
Everything is still...
Brad?
Nope.
Jim?
Two things. David gave me some information from the city of Newport about city council goals, and I think that I printed them off, and there's too much there to start on. However, we do need to start, and I think, I thought I was going to get a meeting in here before, between this meeting and the last city council meeting, and I ran out of evenings. So we're going to try again this month and see if we can just have a, I guess it would be a work session, right? And that would be just to go over, just to start talking about what kind of city goals we want to have. You ready to get to that?
Well, I'm encouraged by the whole process.
And David, two months, right? You've been here two months?
Today shows my third month.
That's your third month.
What did we ever do without you before?
I don't know that I'm doing anything. Actually, though, I will schedule the next, we could, if you set me, because I did ask for a review semi-qual, review of three months, which would be two months from today, if they were to take. So I'd like to do that, it doesn't have to take 25 minutes. It's one of those things I don't, I prefer not to hear next to me, and I'm doing a horrible job in Florida, even if I couldn't run in October. And maybe get something about it, but if that's okay, I just want to schedule that as an example.
You asked, what did we do in the past? Well, we didn't...
I'm not criticizing you.
No, no. What I, I'm just saying, we got information tonight, we've never seen you before.
And that's just it, he has opened up Beverly D's closet, and he's tackling the big things first and fighting his way through the rest. And that's, we appreciate it.
We'll see if there's nothing else. We were talking half hour, we're going to have it at 6:15 before the...
Exactly, you said.
Yeah.
Do you have a date for that? Or are you picking?
Well, he's just saying before the next city council meeting, before David's review.
Well, I'll schedule it for 6:00. Because I'll have certain things I think I'd like to talk about, questions I still have. The big issue we've got right now is, I don't know how much of the work we'll do, at least in our experience, and to keep it back along, it's considerable. And I don't know that by then, but there's other issues, I'm sure you'll have some of these, so I just like to be able to have an hour and talk about it.
So any other questions, or anything that comes to the room? Not for a repeat motion to adjourn?
We're going to go to the third.
I'll second it. Then move the second to adjourn. The favor say aye.
Aye.
Your adjourn.